Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Texarkana, Texas City Council. It's a little bit loud, isn't it? Today is Monday, June the 9th, 2025, so I'd like to welcome all of you joining us in our audience this evening, as well as those who are joining us online. And at this time, I will call on our city secretary, Ms. Jennifer Evans, to provide a roll call. Ms. Evans?
Ms. Matlock?
Present.
Ms. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Metter?
Okay, Councilmember Metter is not with us this evening, so with his absence, I will be voting on matters that come before the council this evening. And our invocation and pledge was to be led by Councilmember Metter, but Councilmember Davis will be providing the invocation and pledge. So if everyone will please stand at this time.
Please bow your head. Dear Lord, we just come to you tonight, and just thank you for the many blessings that our city and area has. Just ask that you continue to keep us healthy and keep us safe. Just be with those that work for the city and protect us. Lord, just give us the wisdom to be able to act on the city's behalf tonight, and just continue to give us favor. Amen. And the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you very much. And just as a reminder to the council, if you'll please have your microphones turned on in the event that you need to say something during the meeting. That way, we will be able to pick up that audio as a part of our record for the meeting this evening. This time, we move along to our mayor's remarks and items of community interest. We do have several events coming up in the community over the next cupping weeks. First of all, our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Monday, July the 14th, and then our meeting in August will be held on Monday, August the 11th at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. And at this time, I'd like to pause and recognize some of our city interns that we have working with us this summer at the city, and I would like to recognize them when I call your name, if you will please stand. And so our intern representing the city manager's office is Evie Martin. Evie, will you please stand? Very good. And then our intern representing Code and Inspections is Nayla Zatreen. So Nayla, good afternoon. And then our new fellow city manager, is the role that that's called, is Ryan Galvan. So Ryan, will you please stand? All right, and we're certainly glad to have you all with us, not only this evening, but throughout the summer, as far as summer interns. So thank you very much for being here, and thank you for what you're doing for the city. Okay, all right. And then also, in reference to our Parks and Recreation activities, June the 14th, the 21st, the 28th, and July the 12th, we'll have our Farmer's Market at 8:00 a.m., from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at 500 North State Line. That's just adjacent to the downtown federal courthouse. And then on June the 12th, we will have Movies in the Park, The Goonies. That will be featured at dusk. That's at Spring Lake Park, and I happened to be at Spring Lake Park last Thursday evening, and I drove by where Movies in the Park is held after dark, and there was a very large turnout for the movie that was being shown. So I certainly appreciate our Parks and Recreation Department for getting everything put together weekly for these movies, as far as Movies in the Park. It's greatly appreciated. Also, June the 13th to the 16th, we'll have the Baseball Association of Texarkana, Texas, and that will be the district tournament that'll be held at the Swanger Complex. And then June the 20th to the 23rd will be the Baseball Association of Texarkana, Texas Regional Tournament at Swanger Complex. And then June the 27th to the 30th, the Baseball Association of Texarkana, Texas State Tournament will also be held at the Swanger Complex. And then also this weekend, this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we'll have the annual American Legion Baseball Tournament. It will feature a seniors division and a juniors division. The seniors division games will be played at George Dobson Field, and the junior games will be held, played at, or held at Swanger Complex on Field 5, the new turf field. And so we're looking forward to a very good Legion Tournament. I had a chance to look over the teams that are going to be playing in both the junior and division leagues, and it seems like we've got some very, very good teams coming in to compete in the annual Legion Tournament. So I encourage our citizens to come out and support American Legion Baseball in addition to our Baseball Association of Texarkana, Texas. For additional Parks and Recreation information, it can be found on the city's website, or you can certainly feel free to call City Hall for more information. In reference to the Pro Theater upcoming show, Joni's Gymnastics and Dance Center presents Once Upon a Dance, and that will be a dance recital that'll be held on June the 14th at 6:00 p.m., and tickets for that event can be obtained for the show at protheater.org. At this time, we move along to our open forum comments from the public. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the council this evening, you're welcome to do so. You will have up to five minutes to speak on any topic. If you are here this evening and you would like to speak on behalf of one of our public hearing items, then if you don't mind, if you'll please wait until we get to that public hearing item, we'll be more than happy to listen to your comments at that time. We also ask that you please complete one of the sheets that can be found on the rack there by the door, so that we'll have a written record of your being here this evening for our minutes for the agenda. Ms. Evans, did you have any sheets turned in this evening? You did not? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council this evening? If you will, please come forward and state your name for the record at the podium.
Good job. Can you hear me? Yeah. I'm good. Good evening. My name is Kristy Kendrick. I am with Amachi Vision Corps, also the director of Beverly Community Center. What I wanted to do tonight was, first of all, take the time to thank the city of Texarkana, Texas for allowing me to be a part of the team that went to the Nusa Conference, the Neighborhood Association. I had an opportunity to speak on behalf of the Beverly Community Center, as well as Amachi Vision Corps, which the Beverly Community Center falls under the auspices of. I had a super fantastic time. I had an opportunity to meet and greet with a lot of other neighborhood associations that were doing fabulous things, and we connected and made some great partnerships. My workshop, we talked about the things that we're doing at the Beverly Community Center, which involved the Hurricane Borough Relief, the Youth Development Program, as well as the senior program. Megan and I spoke on that together, and I think Vashil presented another workshop with, about the Beverly community as well. But I am disheartened to say that on July 7th, we will be moving out of the Beverly Community Center. We have overstayed our lease agreement. From what I understand, I was told that they had tried to work with us from a month-to-month lease, and we were not in transition fast enough to get to, back to the business of youth development, which we never stopped. We always did youth development, and we continue to do youth development. The kids are a little heartbroken, but we understand that we can reapply for the RFP process once it starts. Not sure when that is, but rest assured that we are not giving up on the Beverly community, and we will reapply. And if we are able to have the opportunity to reassess and to gain access back to the building for, to facilitate it, we promise to go above and beyond. I think what we're doing right now in the community is great. What we failed to do was to represent, I guess, in the capacity of youth development, whatever those terms fall under. But I think that we were doing a super fantastic job. The community seems to think so, anyway. And like I said, it was disheartening to hear or to see that we were, that they tried to work with us, and we pretty much did not hold up our end of the bargain. Now, do realize that the lease agreement that we signed initially was in 2018. 2018. We were not officially in the building until May 1st of 2024 because of break-ins and other things, so we had to, revitalization that had to go on into a building that we don't own, that is owned by the city. And so we had to meet the guidelines of all of those. But I think that we did our due diligence the best that we could. And I appreciate every single thing that they worked with us with, and like I said, we will reapply. I will also be filing an appeal for the termination, but we're looking forward to continue, Amachi Vision Corps and myself, because it is my community as well. We're looking forward to continue to work with the city, as you all will have us, and definitely, we will not be moving from the Beverly community and not serving them. If we just have to move our services to another location, we will, but we will continue to work with the Beverly community. And once again, thank you for the awesome time that you allowed us to do and work with you at the Beverly Community Center, as well as San Nusa.
Thank you, Kirsty. Appreciate your being here with us this evening. Open forum comments from the public is still open. If anyone else would like to address the council, if you'll please come forward. Good evening, sir. If you'll please state your name for the record.
Shaun Dangerfield.
Good evening, Mr. Dangerfield.
Yeah, I'm just here for support, Kristy, as well. I've been around seeing her hard work at the community center for the past year and a half or so, using a lot of volunteers and family, friends, people in the community, and the center's really taking off now. It's doing some wonderful things. I've actually taken my son there a couple times. He had a lot of fun playing with the kids. I see them feeding elderly people, just anybody who comes in looking for food, you know. They're servicing the community, and there's not a lot of, not a lot of buildings or people that are dedicated to that community. And I will say that her and her family has really stepped up and done a lot of great work for the community center. I think it would be a shame if that community center was taken out of her hands, the loving hands of somebody that really cares about the community, that's going to go and work hard for the community. So I'm just here to advocate for something that I see that's wonderful in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Dangerfield. We certainly appreciate your time this evening with us as well. Anyone else in the audience would like to address the council? Okay, very good. All right. At this time, we move along to our appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Do we have any appointments to be made by the council this evening, or reappointments? Okay, hearing none. We'll move along to items for consideration. We do have several items this evening on the consent agenda. Item one is to consider approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the city council held on May 12th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. Item two is to consider approval of the minutes of the Joint Budget Advisory Committee Workshop of the City Council, held on May 28th, 2025 at 11:30 a.m. Item three is ordinance number 2025-078, amending Section 1 of the Ordinance Number 2025-040, extending for an additional month the moratorium on the acceptance and approval of applications for permitting the installation and placement of devices or machines regulated by Chapter 36 of the City's Code of Ordinances, setting a moratorium expiration at 11:59 p.m. August the 11th, 2025, and setting public hearing on August 11th, 2025, for council consideration of code chapter 36 revisions. Item number four, resolution number 2025-079, approving the Texarkana Regional Airport Apron Phase III Project in the amount of $4,274,853, and approving the airport executive director to sign a work order with McClellan Consulting Engineers Incorporated for apron Phase III construction in the amount of $477,000 to be funded solely by grant and federal funds. Item number five, resolution number 2025-080, approving a pavement rehabilitation project not to exceed $400,000, and approving the airport executive director to sign a work order with McClellan Consulting Engineers Incorporated for pavement rehabilitation in the amount of $55,200 approved in the capital fiscal year 25 budget. Item number six, resolution number 2025-083, amending resolution number 2025-046, and approving the self-service fuel system project for an amount not to exceed $395,000, and approving the airport executive director to sign a, sign a work order with Garver LLC for the self-serve AV gas tank design and administration in the amount of $84,000 approved in the capital fiscal year 25 budget. Item number seven, resolution number 2025-084, amending resolution number 2025-059, and approving the airport executive director to sign a work order with Garver LLC for vehicle service road design in the amount of $211,400 approved in the capital fiscal year 2025 budget. Item number eight, resolution number 2025-086, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Altech Incorporated of Texarkana, Texas for an amount not to exceed $90,135.03 for the clearing and grubbing of city property on Gazola Street recently received from the Chamber of Commerce with funds budgeted in the Economic Development Fund, Fund 223. Item number nine, resolution number 2025-087, authorizing an expenditure for an amount not to exceed $50,000 for the Texarkana Regional Airport Airshow with funds budgeted in the Hotel Occupancy Fund, excuse me, Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund, Fund 212. Item number 10, resolution number 2025-088, authorizing an expenditure for an amount not to exceed $50,000 for the Red River Lone Star Support Committee in support of Red River Army Depot with funds budgeted in the Economic Development Fund, Fund 223. Item number 11, resolution number 2025-093, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with JSG Homes LLC of Atlanta, Texas for the construction of four homes selected under the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs Home Program. Item number 12, resolution number 2025-094, supporting the application for emergency solutions grant homelessness prevention funds. Unless a council member would like to pull one or more items for further consideration, I will consider a motion to approve the consent agenda as it has been presented. Is there a motion for approval? We have a motion by Councilmember Hart. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Davis. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. The consent agenda has been approved. For those of you listening to those items, you probably picked up on the fact that we have a lot of work going on at our regional airport, so looking at those items that we went over this evening. At this time, we move along to our action items on our agenda. Item 13 is ordinance number 2025-60, establishing guidelines to become a film-friendly Texas-certified community, amending the Code of Ordinances by adding Article 4, Film-Friendly Texas, Texarkana, to Chapter 2, administrative, and authorizing the city manager to secure film-friendly Texas certification from the Texas Film Commission, to oversee filming and establish additional regulations for promotion of economic development activity pertaining to commercial, movie, or television series projects. And any questions by the council on this particular item? Any additional input from staff on this one, David?
There's no additional information, other than, as you'll recall, last time, Rayleigh Derrick, our intern from A&amp;M, presented this item, so this was our capstone project for the year.
If there are any further questions or input, I'll entertain a motion for approval. Is there a motion for approval of the ordinance? We have a motion by Councilmember Page, and then Councilmember Thompson. I'll give you a second on that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Second by Councilmember Thompson, and Ms. Evans, the caption, please.
In ordinance of the city council of the city of Texarkana, Texas, establishing guidelines to become a film-friendly Texas-certified community by amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Texarkana, Texas, adding Article 4, Film-Friendly Texas, Texarkana, to Chapter 2, administrative, authorizing the city manager to secure certification from the Texas Film Commission as a film-friendly Texas-certified community, to oversee filming and to establish additional regulations for promotion of economic development activity pertaining to filming commercial, movie, or television series projects within the corporate limits of the city of Texarkana, Texas, containing legislative findings and establishing an effective date.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ordinance passes unanimously. Moving along now to item number 14, resolution number 2025-081, authorizing the city manager to accept an EPA Brownfields Community-Wide Assessment Grant in the amount of $500,000 in partnership with the city of Texarkana, Arkansas, under a memorandum of understanding executed October 24th, 2023, and execute all necessary contracts and documents to implement the requirements of this grant. Any questions by the council on this item? Anything else to add, David? Okay, all right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the resolution. Do I have a motion?
Submerge.
We have a motion by Councilmember Davis. We have a second by Councilmember Page. This item pertains to a resolution, so there's not a caption. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Resolution passes. We move along to item number 15, resolution number 2025-085, ending the authorization of resolution number 2022-135 for contracting with a governmental affairs consulting firm, and authorizing the city manager to provide advance written notice of termination of the consulting services agreement with McWilliams Strategies LLC. And we'll have our city attorney, Mr. Jeff Lewis, to provide some additional information. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers.
Ms. Hart, you okay? You need some water or something? Can somebody get Ms. Hart some water, please? Oh, okay, we got it. She came up. Okay, Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. Back in 2022, the city council approved from a couple of submitted proposals a governmental affairs consulting firm in Austin. As with many of the firms in Austin, they employ registered lobbyists, and this particular agreement that the council authorized automatically renews every year unless either party utilizes the terms of the agreement to provide written notice of advanced termination. During the recent session of the legislature, the aspect of lobbying came under heavy scrutiny. There were companion bills that were filed in both House and Senate. The Senate bill progressed the furthest. There were some strong words that were contained in bills and substitute bills to curtail, if not completely eliminate, municipalities' utilization of taxpayer funds to hire this type of governmental affairs consulting service. Texas Municipal League worked very hard with the senators when considering Senate Bill 19 to exempt TML activities, so even if the matter had become law, TML's services for Texarkana and other cities would have still been able to continue. The legislature concluded. There was no official final action on these bills. Nevertheless, with some discussions with the city manager and others, I don't, in my opinion, I don't see this as an issue that's going to go away, and that should prompt some reevaluation of the types of services that we need, especially on pending issues as we move forward. So it's the city staff's recommendation that we go ahead, now that the legislative session has ended, and provide pursuant to the contract terms, written notice of advanced termination, and authorize the city manager to send that, and that would end the authorization from the 2022 council resolution. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Any questions for Mr. Lewis on this item? All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate your input. Any other questions or comments on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the resolution. Is there a motion? We have a motion by Councilmember Thompson. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Page. Once again, this involves a resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The resolution passes. This completes our action items for our agenda this evening. We'll now move along to first briefings. We do have several first briefings this evening. The first one is item number one, ordinance number 2025-082, calling for a special election to be held on the November Uniform Election Day, Tuesday, November the 4th, 2025, to consider city charter amendments. And our city attorney, Mr. Jeff Lewis, will brief the council on this item. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. Every five years, charter directs that city staff review and propose, if necessary, amendments to the city charter. There are four proposed amendments. Council approval is required first. With council approval, then these would go forward and be submitted to the electorate for the November Uniform Date Election. We've structured the ordinance, if approved, to follow our typical practice of asking Bowie County to administer the election for us. That would be subject to an election agreement that we would bring forward at a later date for council consideration. Just of the four amendments, Amendment A introduces a new section, but it's consistent with what the council has already approved in the past. It would be a mission, vision, and value statement guiding the overall direction of the city. This is the opportunity for the voters to basically give their consideration and approval of the value statement that city council has approved. Amendment B is expansion of the residency requirements for both the city manager and the city judge to include Bowie County. This is to encourage succession planning. This is also to help attract, for future issues, broader pools of qualified applicants. It is my understanding, in talking with both the city judge and the city manager, they're not planning to go anywhere anytime soon. But, to be fair, I did ask the city judge, Judge Sherry Jackson-Hawkins, if she concurred with this, and also another proposed amendment, and she has, but I'll be happy to defer to her or the city manager on this topic. Amendment C, this is to refine the organizational structure that's in the charter that dates back a number of decades for the city manager appointment for the municipal clerk, as opposed to the judge. And again, Judge Jackson does concur with this. Amendment D is similar in scope to refine the city charter to comport with existing practices, designating to the city manager the authority to provide a technical advisor to the Planning and Zoning Commission in lieu of the dedicated planning director, as the current charter reads. The council packet contains the proposed ordinance, the proposed amendments, red lines comparing the amendments to current wording, and it also contains the form of ballot measures, A, B, C, and D, that would be submitted to the Bowie County Elections Administrator if the council approves. Any questions, sir?
Questions for Mr. Lewis on these items, proposed amendments to the charter? Okay, very good. All right, item number two is resolution number 2025-089, adopting the CDBG Fiscal Year 25 Annual Action Plan. Is Vashil with us this evening? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to present our CDBG Annual Action Plan for 2025 and fiscal year 2026. So this is one of two public meetings. This is our first briefing. On July 14th, we will have a public meeting and a vote. We have a survey that can be filled out on the screen. It's also on our website. We've got notices published in Texarkana Gazette, Amigo News on the website, as well as our social media. We have copies available at City Hall upon request. And like I said, the public comment period, it will be from June 13th through July 14th, and it's a 30-day period. And those comments can be made at City Hall or by contacting me, and we can get the information for that. Okay. Our allotment this year that we are awarded is $382,663. Some of the things that we're looking at doing are public services, and that money would go to some of our local organizations for homeless services, youth services, things like that. The rest of the funding will be in general services for Adlin, as well as sidewalks, tree planting, community gardens. tree planting, community gardens, crosswalks, demo, sun and light. We are looking to spend all of our award money through this next year and not be hopefully rolling anything over. Do you guys have any questions about anything?
Any questions for Megan? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate the information. Item number three is Resolution Number 2025-090, approving an extension of the 1985 Millwood Water System Agreement, joint resolution with the city of Texarkana, Arkansas. David?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council. So back in 2022, both the city council and the Arkansas Board of Directors approved a joint resolution that directed each city manager to develop short-term and long-term bi-city goals in all matters pertaining to water. Extending the 1985 Millwood System Agreement between both cities was one of those goals, and the current agreement expires with maturity of all associated revenue bonds on September 1st, 2025, later this year. This proposed joint resolution approves the extension of the 1985 Millwood Contract through December 31st of 2030. It authorizes the city managers to finalize ownership interests with the Millwood System after bond maturity later this year. It also directs the city managers to develop a joint operating protocols for the Millwood System operations. And finally, it directs preparation and execution of all conveyance documents for ownership of the Millwood System. I want to recognize Jeff Lewis for his hard work on this particular item. It's been over a period of months, if not years, that we've worked on this extension. And I also want to recognize Texarkana, Arkansas city manager Tyler Richards as well for his work. And at that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for David on this matter? I just want to also echo the great work with our city manager and our city attorney, and Mr. Richards, the city manager on the Arkansas side. This is a very, very important matter that we have before us, and so I certainly appreciate your great work and the Arkansas side's great work, because this is going to extend us out for years and years to come. So just appreciate that very much. Any questions by the council on this item? Move along to item number four, Ordinance Number 2025-091, removed from tabled status, rezoning Lot 2, Martha S. Pace subdivision, located 3412 Galleria Oaks Drive, which is located in Ward 6, from Single Family 1 to Planned Development Neighborhood Service, Aaron Galore owner. And Michelle Daniel is going to brief us on this item, as well as the next item. Michelle, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. So this is a request to rezone 3412 Galleria Oaks Drive from Single Family 1 to Planned Development Neighborhood Service. The property is currently vacant. The future land use map has designated this property as mixed-use development. The adjacent zoning is Planned Development, General Retail to the west, and Single Family 1 to the north, east, and south. The adjacent land use is office to the west, residential to the north, vacant property to the south, and a church to the east. The owner will need site plan approval before development. Staff and planning and zoning have recommended for approval of this request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Michelle on this matter? Okay, thank you, Michelle. Item number five is Ordinance Number 2025-092, rezoning an approximate 6.11 acre tract of land being tract 2, FW Shifflin Headright Survey, 8-928, located at 5825 Pleasant Grove Road, located in Ward 5, from Single Family 1 to Single Family 2. Andy Rayburn owner and Brad Metter, 2B Builders Agent. A 3/4 vote will be required by the city council to approve this request. Michelle?
Good evening again. So this is a request to rezone a six-acre tract at 5825 Pleasant Grove Road from Single Family 1 to Single Family 2. The future land use map has designated this property as suburban residential. The adjacent zoning is Single Family 1 to the north, east, and west, and outside the city limits to the south. The adjacent land use is residence to the north, east, and west, and outside city limit residence to the south. The proposed use is to build single-family homes with a 1,500 square foot minimum. These will be builder-suit homes. Staff did recommend for approval of this request, and planning and zoning denied the request due to the different lot sizes being nonconforming to the area. I'll be happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
So, Michelle, what are the lot sizes for this proposed subdivision?
So for the proposed subdivision, the lot sizes will be 7,200 square feet. The surrounding lot sizes are around 1,200, I mean, I'm sorry, 12,000 square feet. And so what this is, is it's a difference of 20 feet width in the lot sizes. So the Single Family 2 lots are 20 feet narrower than the Single Family 1 lots.
Okay, so does that include the setbacks, or is that just the total?
That's just the total lot size.
Total lot size. So then you've got your setbacks and your easements and all of that to contend with as well?
Yes, sir.
And then one more question I had. I was kind of looking at this in the packet to determine on that west end, there's a street called Sunny Street. Would this street connect that street or not?
Yes, sir. So Sunny Street would connect and would go out through Pleasant Grove Road. So the existing Sunny Street, there would be a street built and would connect to Pleasant Grove Road.
Okay, okay. That's all the questions I have. Any questions by the council on this item? Wouldn't have very much grass to mow, would you?
No, sir. No, sir.
So anyway, I'll think on that one a little bit. All right, any other questions by the council? Okay, all right, very good. Thank you, Michelle.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate your input this evening. At this time, we belong to our public hearings. We do have four public hearings scheduled this evening. And by the way, I failed to mention on our first briefings, we will have public hearings and council consideration at our next council meeting on July 14th on these items we just went over. Our next topic is involving public hearings. Item one is Ordinance Number 2025-073, rezoning Lots 6 and 7, Wellsford subdivision, located at 3126 Norton Street, Ward 1, from Single Family 2 to Single Family 3. Maya Anna Silas owner, Randy Davis agent. At this time of the public hearing open on this item, if anyone would like to address the council, if you'll please come forward and state your name for the record. Good evening.
Yes, sir. Good evening. I'm Maya Silas, and I'm owners of the land, and I have Randy Davis agent, and he's speaking to me. I'm from right now, my looks not really good, so I'm scared y'all don't understand. So just in case.
You're doing just fine now, so, okay. Yes, sir?
My name's Randy Davis. I would like to point out one thing that was on here. The address is showing 3126, but it's actually 4126 Norton.
Okay, so it should be 4126?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll note that and check into that further. Do you have any additional information that you'd like to share with us in reference to this proposed ordinance?
So both of the properties that she bought, the Lot 6 and Lot 7, they're right next door, so we had to do a request of abandonment, because it looked like at one time there was going to be a road that was there, but there hasn't been anything. It's just another of the trees, looks like a forest. So there hasn't been any cleaning out or anything like that, but we have done the request for the abandonment, and we're just trying to get that settled for the rezoning.
And a road there.
Okay, okay. All right, very good. Anything else you'd like to share?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions by the council?
I do have a question.
Mr. Thompson?
So was, is this a platted subdivision? It's a lot. You said it was two lots. So it must be a platted subdivision.
Yes.
So was the proposed roadway or alley that you assume is abandoned, was that shown on the plat, the recorded plat?
Whenever we were talking to the lady up here, it looked like they planned on doing like a road or an alleyway there at one time, but nothing was ever done with it.
Right.
So that was the reason why she went ahead and let, that we needed to do a request for abandonment, alleyway?
Right.
Yeah, it doesn't even look like an alleyway, so.
I understand. Yeah, sometimes they just never follow through, but, okay.
Ms. Matlock?
Yes, there's never been a road or an alleyway there. I do have a question. Is the young lady, she planning to live there or rent there?
She plans on living there, getting a mobile home.
Any other questions by the council? Mr. Davis?
Can we get some clarification on the address? Because it looks like to the north, or top of the map, it's 3118, and then below it's 3110. So is it really in the 4,000 block, or?
Well, to do some research on that. I would say at this time, because everything has been approved with this address, we'll need to postpone and do some research on it to come back with the correct address. If it's gone through the process at P&amp;Z and at first briefings without this being caught, we'll need to do some research.
I just wanted to make sure everything was.
Kind of think along the same lines. Instead of moving forward and taking action, we probably need to make a motion for postponement, do some further research, and then bring it back. Perhaps, would this have to go back to P&amp;Z, or?
If the address was keyed to 3126, and it's really 4126, I'm expecting that there would need to be new notices sent out. But again, I'm just anticipating. I have no involvement in this. But this would also pertain to the second item on the agenda as well, Mayor.
Right. Mr. Davis?
So if we took action tonight on the address that's being presented to us, and that ended up being incorrect, then it would still need to come back through P&amp;Z and then come back in front of us. I just don't want to delay them in the event that, I hope you are incorrect, so that we can move forward.
Right.
But I would hate for us to stop, and then it really be the 31, and then we have to bring it back in 30 days.
I agree, because I don't, I think it's 3126, because all the houses on that street, they get larger the farther you go down on that dead end. So I don't think it will be getting larger going in the other direction.
All right. So what other documentation or means do you have that you think is 4126?
Whenever you bought the land, in the title, did it show the address of the 41?
No.
Okay, so whenever she purchased the land, like the email that she received from them purchasing the land, it was put in there? Maybe it was a typo that was 4126, or it could be 3126. It's just judging from the email that she received, it said 4126 on it.
So would that pertain to an address in the email, or an address on a legal document that was sent?
For the title document?
Thompson, I'll defer to you.
I do have a question, yes. So the legal description is generally what we would go from, not mailing address. And if the legal description is correct, I would say we're good to go. The mailing address would not necessarily, I mean, it's in conflict, you'd like everything to be absolutely, you know.
I just want to know which numbers we need to put on the side of the mailbox.
Yeah, and that's a 911 thing.
The address shown in the appraisal district in BCAT and on our Texarkana maps is 3126 Norton Street. So that is the current address.
So it might have been a typo on there, and?
Okay, all right, thank you, Michelle.
Everybody good with that?
So with that said, then if the council decided, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lewis and Dr. Orr, so if the council decided to move forward and take action on that item, on this item this evening, should be okay to do that?
Yes.
Do you concur, Mr. Lewis?
At this point, I hope that the speaker owns 3126, and, but again, I'm unfamiliar with the particular case, so I'll defer to Michelle's estimation that the, I tried to pull up BCAT as well, and I'm hitting a bit of a stone wall right now on the server.
Okay, okay. So Michelle's saying 3126, Councilmember Matlock is saying 3126, and so?
So we're 3126.
Okay, all right. It would be consistent with the layout that we have here on the plat, on the screen here, so. Tom, Orr?
Mayor, just to add, the issue I think is going to be the legal notices that were sent out for this particular, so, you know, as long as it is 3126, I think we're fine. The issue I was bringing up is if they're saying it's something different, we would have to renotice the legal public notice, and that's the issue of having a different address. But if it's, we can all say it's 3126, and then, especially with it being on BCAT as 3126, it should be correct. And staff normally researches that at the very onset of a case, so.
I don't know what address they used to send out the public notice, but I know that I got calls, the people that called me, they didn't get anything, so.
I don't know what notice, I don't know which, what address they used to send out the notices.
Are there signs that are posted?
There's a sign.
There are signs, and then the notices go within 200 feet.
Okay.
So there's a chance that there's?
Maybe 200 feet, but they did. I told them what the signs were there for, but they didn't get anything.
Okay, so move forward. So they did not get anything? The neighbors did not get anything?
They didn't get anything, but they were not disputing it. I just want to know why the signs.
So typically?
It may not be maybe 200, 200 feet.
Yeah, it could be within, we commonly receive that sometimes. I do know in the packet, a lot of times, we have a list of the addresses that were notified, and some of those go back to the tax roll. So as an example, you can see a lot of vacant property.
Yeah.
So it went to whoever is the legal owner of that.
Yeah, all around this particular lot is vacant properties.
Okay.
All right, anything else that you all would like to add this evening?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, well, good. Well, thank you for your time. Appreciate you being here this evening with us. Public hearing is still open on this item, if anyone else would like to address the council, if you'll please come forward. At this time, I declare the public hearing closed. Shall we move forward with the motion for approval?
So moved.
All right, so is there a motion for approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hart. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Page. Ms. Evans, the caption, please.
In ordinance of the city council of the city of Texarkana, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Texarkana, Texas, by rezoning on Lot 6 and 7, Wellsford subdivision, located at 3126 Norton Street in the city of Texarkana, Bowie County, Texas, from Single Family 2 to Single Family 3, containing a repeller clause, containing a severability clause, and establishing ineffective date.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ordinance passes. Item two is related to item one. Item two pertains to the specific use permit. So item two is Ordinance Number 2025-074, granting a specific use permit to allow the location of a HUD code manufactured home on Lot 6 and 7, Wellsford subdivision, located at 3126 Norton Street in Ward 1, Maui Anna Silas owner, Randy Davis agent. At this time, I declare the public hearing open on this item, if anyone else would like to come to address the council on this item, if you'll please come forward and state your name for the record. Not seeing anyone coming forward at this time of the public hearing closed. Is there a motion for approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Page. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Davis. Ms. Evans, the caption?
In ordinance of the city council of the city of Texarkana, Texas, amending the zoning map showing the location, boundary, and use of certain property by the granting of specific use permit number S-809 to allow the location of a HUD code manufactured home on Lot 6 and 7, Wellsford subdivision, located at 3126 Norton Street in the city of Texarkana, Bowie County, Texas, containing a repeller clause, containing a severability clause, and establishing ineffective date.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ordinance passes. Item three is Ordinance Number 2025-075, rezoning a portion of approximate 1.994 acre tract of land being tract 4, RG Cannon Headright Survey, 8-733, located at 2021 Mall Drive, which is located in Ward 4, from general retail to parking. Strategic Restaurant Enterprises Incorporated owner in Janet Reed and Jeremy Nineoncamp? Nineoncamp with Texarkana? with Texas Roadhouse agent. At this time, I declare the public hearing open on this item. If anyone would like to address the council, please come forward and state your name for the record. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Neenencamp. I'm the managing partner at Texas Roadhouse. Close, but that's all right. But we're just trying to rezone a portion of the property formerly known as Bryce's Cafeteria and Haven Homes to part from, I think it's Commercial, Highway Commercial to Parking District. We are planning on demolishing the existing building that's there right now and then using the front half as... Going to try to sell it off later. And then we're going to develop the back half that's towards the Summer Ridge roadside for employee parking, just to expand our ability to continue to seat more guests.
Well, you have a lot of guests.
Yes, sir, we do.
Every time I drive by there, it's packed. So, and that's a good thing.
Yes, it is.
So appreciate your new location. It's a beautiful location. I appreciate everything. And you have Bubba's next door, so that complements your business as well. So seems like things are going well for you all these days.
Very well, thank you very much.
Okay, very good. Any questions by the council? Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Public hearing is still open on this item. If anyone else would like to address the council, please come forward. At this time, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hart. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Davis. Ms. Evans, the caption, please.
In ordinance of the city council of the city of Texarkana, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Texarkana, Texas by rezoning on an approximate 1.994 acre tract of land being tract 4 RG Cannon HRS 8-733, located at 2021 Mall Drive in the city of Texarkana, Bowie County, Texas, from general retail to parking, containing a repellor clause, containing a severability clause, and establishing ineffective date.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. The ordinance passes unanimously. Mr. Neenencamp, you didn't bring any rolls with you this evening, did you? Okay, all right. Didn't mean to call you out, so, all right.
I think our next meeting is July 14th.
Yeah, that's right. So maybe you'll have another item to bring before the council, so, all right. At this time, we've along to item number 4. Public hearing continued on Summit Utilities' proposed natural gas rate increase. Effective date of increase suspended by resolution number 2025-023 to July 31, 2025. No council action will be required at this meeting. First public hearing was held on April 14. Second public hearing was held on May 12, but not closed. Council action on this proposal, together with city staff recommendations, will be tendively scheduled for the July 14 regular meeting. And just as a point of emphasis, the Newtown gas line replacement update and the SUA executive summary document. We do have representatives this evening from Summit Utilities. And at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open. And if you all would like to share something with us, feel free to come forward. And if you'll please state your name for the record. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Brooke Parsons with Summit Utilities. I have a few guests with me here today. Not to gang up on you guys, but simply so that we have lots of expertise. We have Mr. Philip Gillum, Ms. Latoya Johnson, Greg Strickland, who you'll hear from in just a moment, and then also Drake Moody.
Glad to have you all with us this evening.
So as part of your packet, you should have an executive summary. And so I'm just going to highlight a few points from that executive summary and add a little bit of information to one of those points. Summit's mission is to deliver safe, always-on natural gas. And to do that, we have to operate, maintain, and continuously improve and invest in our pipeline and infrastructure. As a reminder, on March 10, we submitted a statement of intent to increase the natural gas rates for Texarkana and a few of the surrounding cities by approximately $2 million. This is largely driven by investments in infrastructure and to more accurately reflect our cost of business. We recognize that Texas is not Arkansas. We recognize that. I just want to make that clear. We do know. But Texarkana's system is similarly situated as our Arkansas system, both in terms of pipe in the ground and the costs and expenses to serve that system. This is why we're proposing to recover the same rates in Texarkana as we are in Arkansas. Since we last appeared before the council, we were able to provide some additional Texas-specific information to staff. That information shows that the city were to set rates solely on Texas data. Then the company would recover approximately $3.2 million from the Texarkana area ratepayers. However, the proposal that the company has before you today is much less. It has a company recovering $2.4 million. This proposal that is before you is a savings of approximately $800,000 for your constituents. We also have provided a little bit of additional information on the riders. While these riders do have new names, they are not new to the Texas jurisdiction. The BDA was previously implemented by the former owner. And it was called... It was the BDA until that former owner implemented a more comprehensive rider called the Formula Rate Plan. The BDA's intention is to account for potential declines in the number of customers and customer usage. And adjustments are made annually, but only if there has been a decline in customer numbers and usage. The SSER is a safety rider. This was previously known to this area as the main replacement rider. And again, this is another rider that was kind of encompassed in that FRP that we just mentioned, the Formula Rate Plan. And SSER enables a more gradual rate increase. And the increases are based on specific historical information that is reviewable and audited. The rate change before us enables us to continue to deliver the top-tier service our customers have come to rely on, supported by a dedicated and skilled local team. Summit remains committed to meeting the energy needs of Texas residents while providing outstanding customer service. And at this time, I can pass along to my colleague Greg Strickland to talk a little bit more about Newtown replacement.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you, Brooke.
Yes.
Thank you, Brooke. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. I'm Greg Strickland, Director of Operations for Texarkana.
Good evening, Mr. Strickland.
So I want to take a minute to follow up on a couple of previous questions surrounding gas line replacement projects around the Newtown area of Ward 1. Much of that area was replaced in 2012 to 2014, as indicated in the maps we sent over. I believe they may have been included in your packets that you received. Of course, these projects were completed at that timeframe by the former owner. At that time, most of the piping in the area was a cast iron material and was replaced by the modern polyethylene piping that is commonly used in the industry today. So while I've got just a minute, I would like to expand the conversation just a little bit to what we have planned for '25. So we began our annual projects about two weeks ago. So they're going to be in and around the Kennedy Lane area, kind of west of the high school, junior high, kind of bound on the south by Shady Lane and then Lambeth on the north end there. So we'll have approximately three miles of piping that will be ongoing over the next few months to replace all the mains and services in those areas. So the projects will probably be completed over the next three to four months timeframe. So any questions surrounding Newtown or...
I do have a question. How can you prove to me that these lines were replaced? When you say you got it on paper, how can you tell me? Because if you had replaced the lines, the ground would be dug up in some kind of fashion, right?
Well, back in 2012 and '14, we install lines multiple ways, one of which, like you're talking about, we dig it up. Sometimes we use boring, directional boring rigs. We would have been using directional boring rigs at that time as well where we bore under the ground. We still would have to excavate at the tap and at your house, even if they used that method.
But there's no way for you to prove that these lines have been replaced?
I've got records, historical records to show that.
I guarantee you that none of these gas lines have been replaced. That nobody got any kind of notifications or anything. And I guarantee you, these lines have not been replaced. You can prove it to me. Picture's better than a thousand words.
Um, but a picture...
Greg, these would have been replaced under the previous owner, correct?
They would have been replaced under the previous owner, yes.
And do we have any recent, like, week survey data or anything of that nature around this area?
We survey it periodically.
So while it's not exactly meeting your answer, some of the records were before our ownership. Everything that we have is stating that we have these replacements. We do checks to make sure these lines are safe and reliable. But I understand that doesn't speak directly to your concern. We're not... I promise, we're not trying to avoid the question, but this is just... This is how our business is ran, right? Based on...
If these lines have been replaced, everybody in the neighborhood would know because this was a family neighborhood. If one person's out there, we see somebody on the corner doing something, we go and ask, "Hey, what are you doing?"
I recognize that. And I mean, there are ways in which we can look at the pipe, but to incur that expense for a pipe that our surveys are showing is still safe and reliable is not a prudent expense.
So if they show safe and reliable, you did not replace them, right?
No, that's not... That's not true. So there is an age to a system. And so there is a natural progression of replacement based on the age of the system so that we don't get to a point where it's unsafe.
So in these areas that are stated to have been replaced, are you having any kind of service issues in those areas or reliability issues in those areas?
Not that I'm aware of.
I don't... You know, I'm not concerned about the issues. I'm just saying, they said they did it and they didn't. Because I've been living there. And I'm up at 6 o'clock in the morning. This was before I started working. Nobody's been there to replace anything. Nobody's notified us. Did you have sent out notices to say, "Hey, we're going to turn your gas off"? You wouldn't know if they were going to turn it off and replace lines. They haven't done any of that.
So to be specific, we're talking about in August 6, 12, and 7 of 2014. So 11-plus years ago.
I can add. I know, but it's, you know, basically 11 years ago.
I didn't mean to be disrespectful, ma'am. I'm just... It's... But that's the records that we have.
I know what you're saying, but I'm just saying there's no way you can prove it. There's no way you can prove it.
I mean, we can absolutely do our research and see what information we do have. I will say that those are not our records.
You only pulled up the ones that I asked you about, which are my residences, my family residence. I don't know about all these others over there. They probably have the same question. When did you do it? Because I have gas dryers, gas furnace. If you all had replaced that, you would have told me. So you would have... I would have, "Hey, you're not going to have service." Something would have been sent out. Nothing was sent out. And that's my issue. You are... We can sit here and we can quibble over it all day. It's not going to solve the problem.
I respect the concern. I do. I just don't know what records we would have from back then because it wasn't our company. It was a former company. I would hope that they were not falsifying any records or documents and we have nothing to say that they have or they would. But I can absolutely do a quick check and see if there is anything that we have, if there's any sort of pictures or anything of that nature. I just don't know what records we might have.
I'll go back and do some more research as well. Any additional questions?
Mr. Davis? The only concern that I have, whenever I was going back through the information that was provided to us, is I believe y'all referenced the previous owner. I think y'all closed that back in '22.
Yes.
And my concern, as far as how I interpret everything that I've read so far, is that y'all have figured out that maybe y'all didn't set the price right and you're trying to right-size it. And in my opinion, if y'all made the mistake in the negotiation with the previous customer, the citizen shouldn't have to make that right. That's the concern that I have currently.
So it wasn't that we set rates too low. It was a byproduct of an Arkansas proceeding and how we have historically set rates in Texarkana. So historically in Texarkana, we've essentially taken the cases that have been presented and litigated in Arkansas and presented that rate to Texarkana. We like to have the rates be the same across the board, right? From Texas to Arkansas. It also is a cost saver to do it in that manner. In Arkansas, there was an agreement with the commission, where the commission approved the rates and they set the rates. And at that point, they had set the rates somewhat too, in our opinion, too low to recover for our accurate cost of business.
But y'all purchased it anyway.
Well, that... Microphone, I'm sorry. That had nothing to do with the purchase price, though, right? So the purchase price was separate than that. We, in the negotiations with the commission, because the commission had to approve the purchase, that's when the rates got set. And there was... There's a lot of technicality to that. And I was happy to follow up with you and give you more specifics about what happened in that case and how those rates got set, in our opinion, low. But this is a byproduct of those earlier rates that were set in 2022 and our additional investment since then.
So at the time that the commission approved the change of ownership, were those rates taken care of at that time? Or was there a rate case filed after ownership was obtained?
So at the time, the original rates were set. That happened in '22. And then more recently, we filed a rate case in last year. So we just finished up a rate case in Arkansas. And so that concluded in October, or it may have been November, of 2024. And then we took the base rate increase from that Arkansas case and have presented it here to the council.
Okay, so when you all purchased from CenterPoint, at the time of purchase, the rates were the same for your company, your customers for your company as they were with CenterPoint? Is that correct in Arkansas?
I... That I don't want to speak to because I don't have a confident answer. I do think that there was a rate adjustment. I'm just not clear right now on exactly what the rate adjustment was.
Okay.
Mayor, if I can interject.
Mr. Lewis?
Since I remember helping with the preparation of the 2022 documents, basically for the council's perspective, I can't speak to what occurred system-wide in Arkansas. We adopted the rate structure that had been in place with CenterPoint. There were a couple of small adjustments, but not to the rate structure. But my recollection, and I think the records will bear out, focusing solely on the 2022 acquisition timeframe, based of the prior rate structure.
Okay.
At that point in time, there was no... Although I do remember anecdotally asking, and there was, even at that time, I think it was told to me, some kind of rate case. But that they did not have a Texas rate team in place. And I can appreciate not being prepared to take on the Railroad Commission unless you're prepared. But that was my recollection. 2022, it was very much the same rate structure as was already in effect with the CenterPoint rates.
There was already a planned rate case. So we had a timeframe where we had to go in for a rate increase in Arkansas.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Thompson?
So just to be clear, the rate that you receive does fluctuate with the market price of gas or not?
Not. This is separate. This is different than that. Yes. Yes.
So there's a fuel charge, correct?
That's right.
Can that fuel charge fluctuate?
Yes. We call it our cost of gas, our gas supply rate. And that gets adjusted twice a year, and that is a pass-through cost. That is what we pay essentially is what... Exactly what the customer pays.
So do you care to speculate on the price of gas?
If I did, I probably wouldn't be here. I'd be rich somewhere, living on a beach.
Let's bet it's going down. Let's let it... Let's bet it's going down.
That's my question. When does the break go down?
So we do adjust it twice a year. We adjust it. And we hold our winter filing, and that happens October 31 with an effective rate of November 1. And then we do again March 31 with an effective date of April 1. And so it gets adjusted twice a year. And so it gets adjusted twice a year.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public hearing is still open. If anyone else would like to address the council, please come forward. Pastor? Yes, sir. Look, item that we have at hand, yes, sir. Pastor, if you'll please state your name for the record.
James Hawkins.
Good evening, Pastor Hawkins.
I grew up in a Newtown community. And I still own property there. And I've never seen any infrastructure work done as far as replacing gas lines. I concur with Councilmember Melott. We are, we both from the same neighborhood. And I've been there since nineteen sixty. I don't live there now.
Yes, sir.
But I own property there. My family does.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, actually, I've asked my family if they, we don't know of any time, if there's been any replacement of infrastructure work regarding gas lines.
Okay.
I just want to state that.
Okay. Thank you, Pastor.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that. Public hearing is still open. If anyone else would like to address the council, please come forward. Okay, we'll just have a continuation of this public hearing to our next council meeting, which will be held on July the fourteenth. Mr. Lewis?
I wanted to make sure the council is aware that as part of your packet, although it's not quite evident, our city secretary, Jennifer Evans, made sure that the documentation that Summit submitted to us on May thirty, it is hyperlinked at the end of the briefing sheet. There's a lettered listing of A through N of various documents. Those are hyperlinks. It doesn't look it, but they are. And you're able to immediately retrieve the PDFs or download the Excel spreadsheets. And we did our best to make sure that, and thanks to Ms. Evans, you're receiving about hundreds of pages of, of information. And we didn't, we avoided printing it all out.
Okay, all right. So council, you've got that as a point of reference if you need to go back and look through that documentation. All right. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. All right. This concludes our public hearings portion of the agenda. We'll now move along to the city manager's report. Dr. Orr?
Good evening again, Mayor and council. So just a few updates for you tonight. First off, last week, the Chamber's Military Affairs Committee held a series of productive meetings in Washington, DC with the members of our congressional delegation. This visit reaffirmed Red River Army Depot's vital role in supporting national defense readiness and highlighted the significant economic impact that it has on our region. I just want to thank our congressional delegation, both Texas and Arkansas members for meeting with us and for members of our Military Affairs Committee that helped make that trip possible. Our update on our Budget Advisory Committee meeting. So they were held May seventh, the fourteenth, and our joint meeting was held on the twenty-eighth. I just want to thank our staff and council and Budget Advisory Committee members that worked on our FY twenty-six budget recommendations. Special thanks to Kristin and her team that have worked over the budget over the last several months. We'll send out additional information in the summer as we prepare for budget adoption later this year. And we're still working, as you know diligently, on healthcare costs. And we'll bring that back before you and have probably a special workshop meeting, subcommittee meeting on that as well. Was referenced earlier, I want to recognize the Rose Hill Neighborhood Association that was named the National Neighborhood of the Year Runner-Up. This was part of the NUSA Conference. That's the Annual Neighborhoods USA Conference that was held recently in Jacksonville, Florida. And I just want to recognize Chiquita Burks, our Assistant City Secretary, and Rhonda Dolberry, our Rose Hill Association President, for their presentation and their work in our neighborhood. They were recognized as that national runner-up in the category of social revitalization and neighborhood. Yep, category. Couple, just save the dates for you to pass along. First off, later this week, we have the Red River Army Depot 250th Birthday of the United States Army Celebration. That's coming up June twelfth. From eleven-thirty to twelve, it's out of the depot in the Leadership Center. So please send your names if you're interested RSVPing to Brookstone so we can get you in that event. And then also, we have a save the date. Dairy Queen is having a fortieth anniversary surprise and delight tour. This is, I believe, to recognize forty years of blizzards. And so we have been contacted by their, their national group. And they're stopping in Texarkana at the Rotary Splash Pad from one-thirty to three PM that same day. So please join us, along with the Fire Department and Police Department for that. There'll be blizzards, gift cards, and, and more. And then finally, we've got a save the date for, we're working on the twenty-twenty-four International Building Codes meeting. We're looking at updating our international building codes to adopt the twenty-twenty-four version. And that meeting will be held on Wednesday, June eighteenth, from eleven to one in the City Hall Conference Room. I believe we've reached out to a number of builders and developers in the area and invited them to that meeting as well. Lunch will be provided, and we'll talk about the building code revisions that staff is recommending prior to it coming before council. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for David? Okay, very good. Very good report. At this time, we belong to administrative comments. Any comments from the council this evening for the count, for the staff? Hearing none. Then any other final comments from staff to council this evening?
No additional comments.
Okay, very good. So the city council will now be going into closed session. The city council will convene in a closed session pursuant to following sections of the Texas Government Code. Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, consultant with attorney. Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four, personnel matters, the Fireman's Relief and Retirement Fund. The second item is section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney. And section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two relating to real property. And so at this time, for everyone here and those watching live stream, the council does not anticipate taking any action or after closed session other than reconvening in open session and adjourning the meeting. And once again, thank you all for being here.